We don't need, like that original chart, the map that was pointing all over town. Don't need that.
Stan, when you're ready.
I'll have to look that up.
Okay. Let's talk football later, Eric.
I'm waiting on the go-ahead from Stan. Okay, so. I'm waiting on the go-ahead from Stan. Meeting the order. And let's do roll call. Gage here. Okay, so. I'm waiting on the go-ahead from Stan. And let's do roll. Norma?
Present.
Robin is out. Brian is out. Russ?
Here.
Dawn?
Here.
We're good. I don't see any citizens, so no citizen comments. Business items. Comments from David.
Admiral, if you all have any questions.
I did have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Williams. Do you want to, we're going to be working on updating our annual work plan and making some revisions to it. Do you want to see us present to city council before this council's term expires?
I don't know. I have to touch base with Tracy on that.
Okay.
Because I don't know what she has set up for the next couple of meetings that we have.
Okay.
So maybe with the new council.
Okay, that's fine, too. All right, thank you, David. Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Williams? Nope? All right. Okay, moving on. From our economic development director, Eric.
So the work plan is not in the packet, Mr. Chairman Roberts?
Right, it's not in the packet, but it should be on the website itself. Thank you for looking for that, Stan. Mr. Zeno, do you have anything that you'd like to go over with us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman Roberts. We had to come up with a date. We did retail lab after the Austin first retail lab show back in Austin since COVID. It was wild, I must say. It was, I think it was just for them to say we're going to have another show at Council, so they count 2020. Obviously more than 300 people in a room, pretty much like this, about four or five tables, so you just lie out all over people. We're able to get with 23 of the retailers there. I will send a complimentary report out again, complimentary report out at the end of this meeting. Some follow-up with my several retail strategies around meetings. If you didn't know, any time fitness opened on this past Monday, so it's any kind of fitness is open in the village now. August 2020, my sales tax distribution was $94,479. That's an increase, which is going July was $78,106. So again, we're steadily going up, which is a great thing for the sales tax numbers. If you don't know, I think, Mr. Chairman, over the hotel that we had, the hotel did back out during that new development project, process of that project. Had some challenges with the space. It was kind of small. They thought it was too small and they would need to come out of the parking lot. Leave the hotel and come out on the east parking lot side, of course, that's great because they don't want to come out on 14th, they don't want to see it with loud to come out on 14th or 15th. So in those constraints, they thought of the size of the actual land was a little too small. They are still actively looking in this area, but they did abandon that site. We have two more developing hotels, developing groups that is looking as well in the area. Myself and the Chamber President, I guess we all, everybody knows who Chamber President Jennifer, I assume, if you don't know Jennifer, Detective Director. Me and her did VRA visits last week. We did it for businesses. We're going to be doing that again periodically, going out business, visit our businesses in the community. So we did myself and her did a report with businesses last week. If you don't know, the Chamber of Management is tomorrow. I think Superintendent would be the guest speaker, so I don't know if it sold out enough or not. I want to tell you, I think that's the state of the school district.
I don't recall how it was marketed, but I signed up for it.
Okay, good. I think it's the state of the school district tomorrow. That's pretty much all I have. Extra communication market supervisor, anything to add to those things?
We'd like to add that the plaque of appreciation was presented to Lowe's Market. And I can't remember what day was that, Eric. It was the 23rd?
Yes, they are presenting the plaque of appreciation.
On August 23rd at the market, so a big thank you to Lowe's because they do a lot in our community. Often working with us with events. Lago Fest is one thing. They offer us water. They let the different event people sell shirts in the market. So big thanks to them. They really are great. That leads me into Lago Fest 2022. We are scheduled for April 30, 2022. It will be the fifth Lago Fest, so even though we missed COVID, we're scratching back up to make that fifth anniversary. The POA has all the facilities scheduled, of course. We work in K-OKs, in the Barcade pavilions, and of course, the park. And we usually do set up two days before and tear down the day after. We're always happy to find willing and able volunteers to help with anything related to the festival operations. Those days of the festival, festival day, but also in the planning of Lago Fest. I am the sole sitting employee who is the director and the scooper and the builder and.
Oh, my goodness.
The marketer and the contract maker and all of that. But I couldn't do it without Dawn, Dave, Dick Rutherford, and a few other people who helped on festival day, including our spouses. But it's a, it is a beast of a festival and we could use any support in the town.
On that, is there an itinerary? Has an agenda and itinerary been put together yet for Lago Fest?
No.
Long way out.
Okay.
Yeah, April 30th, so we are still probably wait until budget season is over and we get the new council, then we'll start getting planning.
Okay. So if you can, if you want to reach out to EDAC for any input or anything at all, this committee would be happy to work on some ideas and input for you if needed.
That'd be great.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you. Appreciate that. City council meeting is this Thursday, and don't know if you've taken a look at all the candidates that will be running. We do have a couple of write-ins, but candidates as they appear on the ballot. The mayor is on the ballot, running opposed. We have Gage Hunt, running for council member place one, Rob Durbin, council member place three, Paul Roberts, council member place five. And then the write-in candidates are Jesse Waters for council member place three, Marsha Johnston for place five, and Josh Canales. I think that's maybe a production of pronunciation, and that's council member place five as well. At tonight's meeting, there's going to be a discussion, consideration of possible action regarding a roll call vote on adoption of a proposal to set a 2021 tax rate of .6070 for the city of Lago Vista and schedule a public hearing and take necessary action. Don't ask me for all the details. I'm not a financial person, but just giving you a heads up that this is on the agenda. Hearing could be September 27th. That's one option if things go forward. Or the other option, these additional meetings would be required to gain approval of the budget. All that information, agendas and minutes are always found on the city website. You can go in the scrolling tab at the top of the page, it says Document Center, Agendas and Minutes. Click there, you can see the meetings, you can see the packets, and there's also links in the calendar. And I also post it as a news article and on Facebook.
Do you have their agenda in front of you right now?
I do not.
No, it's okay. I just thought maybe you're reading from it. I was going to ask you a quick question about it.
Regarding elections, we have a new poll in sight in Lago Vista. It's Northlake Church Hope Center, which is 20513 Don Drive. They're looking for, actually, they are in dire need of early voting poll workers to work from October 18th through the 29th. There are two shifts, 6:00 AM to 1:00 PM and 1:00 PM to 7:30 PM. It's a paid position and includes a three-hour paid training class. Anyone who's able to spread the word or anyone who's interested in doing that, they can call 512-845-4996. And.
Is that just a site for early voting or does it say early voting and early voting?
This says, "We are in dire need of early voting poll workers." So, yeah.
Would you mind emailing me that little bit?
Sure.
For those guys?
Sure, look. That's also in the news article on the website that you might be able to share with people. One last thing I have is funds available through Texas Emergency Rental Assistance Program for people who are impacted, households impacted by COVID. It's the Texas Emergency Rental Assistance Program, TERP, T-E-R-P. It's operated by Meals on Wheels of Central Texas. The assistance is provided on a first come, first served basis to income-eligible clients of COVID-19 impacted households who reside within the Travis County service area. Other eligibility requirements apply. I do have a link up for it. I can email that to you, Paul, if you wish, or any other member.
Please.
To let you know. Who should apply? Only tenants who reside in unincorporated Travis County, the Village of San Leana, or Weatherville, Creedmore, Lago Vista, or Westlake Hills. All eligibility criteria must be met and landlords must participate. They have until November 30, 2021 to apply or until all funds are spent. So if you know someone who's, you know, interested, don't hesitate, is my suggestion. So that's it. Any other questions?
Thank you very much. Mr. Zeno, I'd like to go back and just touch base with you on a few things, if I may. Wonderful, thank you. Do you, Stan, does he need to be behind the microphone so that the recording picks him up? Perfect. On the the Chamber of Commerce, if you'll just pass along to the new president, I received their marketing emails, and the marketing that they're doing both on social media and direct email is really good. And it's really good. One of their most recent emails, they were asking for stories, if you will, just, I think they framed it as seven sentences. Does that ring a bell to anybody? She sent an email out. I was just curious if you knew if, how many businesses had responded with their story. The question was along the lines of, "Why did you start your business?" And please give us a response in seven sentences. I was just curious if you were aware of any feedback on it.
I'm not aware, but I can definitely x or y your data information.
No worries. Previously, I had, have you heard of any discussions regarding, any potential leasing out of any commercial property in Lago Vista such a? Do you know the latest on, for example, the fort at Don in 1431? I know I had mentioned to the committee a couple of months ago that I was reaching out to a former owner of it to try to make a connection and see if I could frankly buy the place and turn it into a rental. I had, that my efforts failed. Do you know of anything going on with that?
Can I?
Yes, Dawn.
Well, sir, as a part of the research on somewhere to move the folks for the, you know, our annex, municipal offices thing, I thought maybe that might be, you know, a good alternative. But I spoke to the realtor who deals with the owner. And the word is, is that it's in pretty bad shape. It's going to take quite a bit to rehabilitate it. And the current owner doesn't doesn't feel like the city would be willing to pay what he wants, so apparently he's wanting a pretty good penny for it.
Okay.
And as far as, and Gage can correct me on this because he's been able to attend the meetings I've been able to attend, but other commercial space, there's very little here. We have the Highland Lakes Real Estate building coming up. I think that Doug Casey is buying that. And whether he has completed the purchase or not, I don't know. Can you know?
I thought I heard that the deal had gone through.
And then the old Vestago location on Barcade. That's another possibility for use in the shopping center, basically. And what else? What else have you guys come up? That's pretty much it, I think.
Where State Farm?
That's the Highland Lakes.
Right, that's it.
That's 5,000 square feet.
What about the property on the corner of Lowman and 1431? We've spoken about that previously. What's the latest status on that? Do you know where? Where the boat repair?
The Marina.
Previously was?
That location is still being marketed. I haven't pulled on that yet. There will be some information that we did speak with them about it in that complimentary report that I will send out.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't know if you want to go ahead and touch on that, I guess, Councilman Williams, and they want to touch on the subcommittee for the building.
Well, I mentioned.
Well, we can.
We did look at Fort Lago. Ballprints went up in there and it was going to take a lot of work to fix that building.
Which, the fort?
The fort.
Okay.
We also looked at the building, the Hanley Building on Broad Road.
It's already committed.
Purchased by Lance Plumbing, so that's going to be up there near Dollar General. So they purchased that building, so that's being remodeled now for Lance.
So this is, I think, a good question for you, Councilman Williams, is there was, one of our recent council meetings, there was some rezoning done east of the airport, I think it was?
Yeah.
Is that right? And, you know, I think, I don't know if EDAC is how much input EDAC can contribute to this, but I think we, I think this committee would very much like to help identify future locations for light industrial and different types of zoning conducive to bringing in some commercial businesses, some industry to try to piggyback off of the heavy presence of the tech sector here in town. Is there any discussion going on on P&amp;Z or on council about identifying locations in the future land use map for such property?
Yes, they're talking about trying to redo the future land use map.
Okay.
I don't know when that will actually take place. Roy's been preaching that for a while.
Right.
It's just a matter of getting everyone to sit down and redo that map to make it more realistic. So, I mean, you'll have some input. This committee would have some input at that time.
Great.
They still need to sit down and actually work it out. I think Tracy's trying to figure out when to establish Roy to really sit down with P&amp;Z and start hammering it out.
Okay.
Because that's starting to cause a problem now with all the future growth that's starting to really get a little chaotic.
Right.
With some of the developers that are coming in, but we need to iron that map out better.
Sure. I think to your point, I think it's a necessary, and just my opinion, I think it's a necessary imperative, similar to what we talked about when we were working on our annual work plan, that we bring in outside dollars into Lago Vista, and it's through that commercial development that we can do that. We can't grow our local economy just recycling local dollars. So we have to lay the groundwork for that, and I think that that groundwork starts with finding the locations that we could point interested parties to and say, "This is where we've identified in our city the place is most conducive to you doing 12,000 feet, 120 square." So cool. Okay, well, I'd say with that.
Lago Marina, as you noticed on the curve on 1431, I mean, on Lowman Ford, they cut the trees down where Lago Marina will be going.
Yeah.
Oh, is that, that's the location?
Yeah.
Okay. That's right. They were, their zoning was approved for that, as I recall.
Right.
Yes.
I recall. Well, with that, let's, I'm going to move the agenda around, and I think this provides for a good segue into Agenda Item Number Seven. Update from Gage Hunt and opportunity for input.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Could I just make a recommendation?
Certainly.
Derek, and this may have already been done, but I'd like to strongly recommend that if she isn't already on the committee, that Jennifer Sandoval be invited to be a part. You know, Elaine Hughes was, when she was the head of the Chamber of Commerce, and I think Jennifer would make a dynamite addition.
We were already approached, Jennifer, when Elaine came out, Jennifer wanted to get her feet wet in the executive direction before she committed, she did come.
Okay, so we need to go visit her and twist her arm.
No, she doesn't even know that she's planning to be here today. She thought we stood online, so that was her text.
Oh, okay. But she'd be a great addition.
No, I remember she couldn't make it every meeting, so that's why she didn't.
Yeah.
But she planned to be here when she planned.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, Mr. Sherman, our city manager, wasn't going to be a tradeswoman, so I don't know if she lost her nephew and grandmother, so.
Oh, no.
Mrs. Wern.
She ended here, but she unfortunately, no.
Please pass along our condolences.
Yeah.
Gosh, it seems that it's just touching so much of our small community with the loss of. Terrible. Moving back to, going back over to, jumping back into Agenda Item Number Seven, update from Gage Hunt and opportunity for input from our committee regarding the process for devising a plan to build new city government offices. Gage?
Yeah, and I'm going to defer to Councilman Williams to step in at any point that he'd like in this update. I want to preface any remarks about the project by just reinforcing, and people that have been through this type of project know it. You don't reach an answer quickly on this type of project. We're addressing two primary problems. One is having enough space for our staff to operate, both today and in the future. And also, we're challenged with some of the conditions of this existing building. So what we're looking at now is what is the best way to provide adequate space for the city to function properly, both today and long-term? And that involves looking at a lot of options in a lot of detail. We're looking at different types. We're looking at new buildings with different types of construction. We're looking at existing buildings. We're looking at an expansion that meets some of our needs, and then renovating this facility to fill out the balance. We're looking at options that would meet all of our future requirements, and then look at a repurposing or some other option for this existing facility. And it just, it takes a long time to walk through the details of this type of assessment because this is a once-in-a-10-or-20-year decision that we're going to make. So on top of it being, a lot of dollars typically be involved in this sort of thing, but also, we don't want to live with something for a long time that doesn't do what we need it to do. So that's really the best I can tell you right now.
That's great feedback. Gage, I have a question, and then I'll open it up to others on our committee. Have they identified, have, has the subcommittee identified what that square footage need is going to be? Do we know how much square footage we're going to need?
We have a preliminary estimate on that, and it looks like going forward for five years, and all we've done is project space needs for five years up to this point. It's somewhere around 14,000 square feet.
In that equation of arriving at that number, does that, I presume that some variable in there is a consideration of population, what our city's population is going to be in five years?
The department heads made an estimate on what they needed, what they thought their staff needs would be, given the growth the city was going through. But again, we've only looked out five years at this point.
Do you recall by chance, Gage, what that population projection is for five years?
I don't.
Do you, David?
No, because, again, we were looking at as far as, we'd be using the 15% growth rate that we had, and then we'd take it down to eight. So, I mean, you can figure that out.
Right.
We were more concerned with staff members, how many staff members you need in two years, how many staff members.
Right.
Three, five, so they projected staff members that they would need, but they didn't, we didn't come to a final number on population.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Gage or David on the city offices?
And we're hoping to get some consensus numbers soon from the last consensus that just completed. We still don't have those numbers from the 2020 consensus that they conducted. They still give us to run around what that number looks like.
It looks like a modular building.
We've looked at a modular building.
Yeah, we looked at modular buildings, both small and large, which would be basically in this area, which would kind of complete a town square kind of work. We looked at Highland Building, Hanley Building, Vestago Building, Fort Lago, Lago Vista Village. We looked at all of that. We had that all laid out. We looked at how much circulatory space we need, and we've been doing it piece by piece and putting it all together. So it's, now we're getting closer where we're putting it into a PowerPoint presentation to show the steps that we took. Because we want to be able to lay out all the steps and let everyone see the steps, because the steps are very important, so that they don't think we're doing this fly-by-night thing. So we've been doing this for quite a while now.
And before we make any firm steps, there will probably be some professional advice that we'll seek out to validate that the methodology you were using for what our requirements are is the right methodology and that we haven't misstepped on anything.
Wonderful.
Good comment.
Yep.
A year or maybe more ago, there was some talk that if it was built up at the airport, that there was a grant that could be applied for to come in and help in build some of this city building. Does anybody remember that conversation?
No, I'm sorry.
It was, I think it was the chairman of the Airport Advisory Committee came to the meeting and was talking about that, that there was a, and I'm going to botch this, but I just remember there was some sort of multi-use.
He was trying to put a convention center, kind of like where planes could fly in and have their meeting and have a hotel and rent cars and hang out. have their meetings, and have a hotel, and rent cars and hang out, and then go back the way over there. And that was on one part of the airport, that he was wanting to do that. I remember that, but I don't-
I've heard something about extending, lengthening the runway here in Lago Vista at our airport, Ruston Allen, is that correct?
Yeah, at one point they were going to try to do that also.
But that was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't know when that will happen.
But there, he gave a formula of how that, if the building was used, whatever percentage split, that there was some sort of grant that could be done. If we kicked in X amount, we would get X amount and subsidize the cost, you know, on that. You know, if no one likes the location, then I guess it really doesn't matter.
Nobody likes the location.
Well, then it's a, then it's a moot point, you know, altogether, but.
Well, but I am gonna say, that brings up a question for me, which is, it sounds like we are competing with the expansion of our economic development in terms of space and commercial properties. Am I wrong in that? I mean, in terms of trying to, to expand the city, then that ends up taking up potentially a commercial space or building that could be another entity, you know, for jobs here.
That's a great question, Norma, and it's something that the committee has actually talked about.
Okay.
That is, that's being weighed as a consideration, and very heavily. So, we're not just gonna jump in and make a recommendation to take away some extremely valuable, what could be, commercial property and increasing our commercial tax base, without there being some really strong financial reasons to do that.
Well, or potentially maybe marketing, I don't know, this, this or something.
And that became a big consideration, you know, because we came up with a weighted criteria, which you'll eventually see the weighted criteria, but there was like nine to 10 items on a weighted criteria that we were weight, evaluating all the different options that are out there, but that was one of them.
Okay.
And that became an issue pretty much on, looking at anything on 1431 or Loman Ford.
Right.
So, we've taken that into consideration and weighed out.
Is there any more space available for lease in the old Highland Golf Course building? Where the grill is?
Talking about where the grill is?
Uh-huh.
I think there's about 900 square feet I saw being advertised recently.
That's it, everything else is, okay.
All that was already spoken for. Don?
Yeah. I think that it's incumbent on us, as the Economic Development Advisory Committee, to consider things in a holistic manner, okay? And the reason I say that is that we have, we have held dialogues in the past about, you know, whether a downtown area or a center of the community, should we have a center of the community? If we should have a center of the community, what would it be? Would it be a commercial center, which we already have started in the Loman Ford, I mean, excuse me, in the 1431 Loman Ford intersection and on beyond, but that doesn't seem to me to be a, the heart of a city.
Correct.
You know what I'm saying? It's retail and, and commercial. The proposal in the 2030 plan was to have Dawn Drive as our town center, and I think it's an ideal opportunity, and I know that the folks on the subcommittee have the mandate to figure out something for the next three to five years, basically, that's, that's what we're looking at, is to have adequate space for employees and so on and so forth within that timeframe. And I just can't stop thinking about, you know, our desire to have a town center, and here's something major that's going to happen with our municipal buildings and municipal area, that it seems to me like it would be wise in the long run to, to do the good work that they're doing on the municipal center, but also have that perhaps as a keystone for the development of a town center. And, you know, this is just-
Do you have that in mind?
Yeah.
I mean, you-
Yeah, I know.
The choir.
Well, you've heard me before, but, but, but the thing is, is, you know, and they don't really, you know, they don't wanna think that long-term, and, but I think it's incumbent on us, being who we are-
Right.
-to, to consider that, and, you know, just as an alternative. I sent, I sent an email, I did a little review of the, of the urban development program at the University of Texas, and tried to pick out somebody that I thought I could target, who would be interested in Lago Vista and the evolution toward the future, but unhappily they haven't responded, so I'm gonna have to, gonna have to do an alternative. But, you know, if we look at it, a town center might accommodate something such as the offices for our municipal government, but also take advantage of an area such as, such as we have here, where you have a rather wide parking area, and take advantage and do, you know, plan for future use, buildings on both sides, and maybe extending down to the next block where we are, the same sort of situation. You know, the wide parking area and have buildings on both sides, maybe two-story buildings with apartments upstairs for the worker bees that would serve in the restaurants that would be developed in that town center and things like that. It's something that I think that, that, you know, we should keep in mind, and I know that they're aware of that, so.
We, clearly, the committee that they're on is, is working on that and taking much, pondering all of, all of those possibilities. I wonder, is there a way to, for this committee to give some type of input, maybe having a subcommittee of this committee liaising in some capacity with y'all's committee, and having, just being able to have some type of input on your final work product?
Dave, if I'm correct, that's why the members were chosen for the committee, weren't they? So, that there, there is representation of, of the EDAC, me, on the committee.
Okay.
And Dave is-
Dawn's on it.
Yeah, I'm still on the committee, although, although I can't attend the meetings very good.
He's teaching Spanish.
Spanish, it's at the same time.
Yeah. And then we had Paul Smith on, on building and standards, but he passed away, so.
Right.
Then we had, and then, I'm trying to think who else was on it, that we had representing the different groups. And then we had all the staff.
Yeah. Good group.
It's 11 people working on the subcommittee, David Williams, Paul Prince, Arch Dabula.
Arch, yeah.
Don Jandro, Gage Hunt, Paul Smith, Roy, Sandra, Eric.
And Tracy.
Aaron.
Aaron.
And Tracy.
Eric and Tracy.
Mm-hmm.
See, that's a pretty good group of people.
Yeah.
Pretty solid group.
It covers all the different angles.
Yeah, it does, doesn't it?
It does.
What, do you, do you have a target date for completion, David?
Yeah, well, I mean, we're aiming to, I mean, we're now put, we got it down to three different scenarios, so we're putting it all together, and we're trying to be able to present it to council sometime in October.
Wow.
You know.
Right around the corner.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
October, we're getting in November here. I think it's gonna happen in October, at least some initial, that analysis, so we get some feedback from council, and you'll see all the data that we have.
I think that's great. I mean, it won't be final, I can't imagine that, something like that getting finalized this year, but I think getting it in front of council before the, in, before the expiration of several council members' terms is very important to get their feedback, coupled with future council members' feedback. That's great.
My, my expectation, again, Dave, please correct me if I sound off track, is that you're not gonna see a finished product, a totally finished product presented in October.
Understood.
What you're gonna see is probably, here's where we are, here's how we think we can identify the short-term requirement that's staring us in the face right now, here are the options directionally that we see to go forward on the long-term plan, so if, if you've ever been through a project like this on the, on the corporate side, it just takes a long time to get it right. And you wanna make sure that you check out all of the options, you know, all the way down to the, to the end.
That's great.
Well, based on, I think, the last time I saw the city council discussion in regard to the city offices, when, when that comes up on the agenda, Meredith, will there be, I'm just thinking, or a suggestion that it is put on whatever social media as a, you know, hey, guys, you know, for those that were really interested and passionate, in addition to the city council, this is one item, you know, that we'd love the community to get behind, something like that? I mean, I just, because it seemed to me there was a lot that was done through council, but people, you know, it gets, there's so much in the council meetings and things that go on, that they, they don't, you know, day-to-day life precludes them, but that, people are very, very passionate about because of the whole thing around, you know, the town center and the heart and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, I would just, just a comment.
Thank you, Norma. Any other discussion on this item? Okay. If not, we're gonna go back up onto our agenda and talk about action item, Agenda Item Number Four, consideration and possible action regarding support for the National Sign Plaza Builders Program, and to endorse and forward a letter of support to Lago Vista City Council as included in the meeting packet. Has anybody not read the letter? Everybody's read it. I would like to just open up the conversation by commenting on one thing on the letter. Referring to the letter, it's in the packet, so I'm not gonna read it for the sake of the recording, but how do you guys feel about, instead of referring, referring to it as NSP by its acronym, referring, referring to it in the letter as National Sign Plazas by the full name?
Do you have more copies?
I can take your mind.
No, 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 then you're good, you're good.
I read it earlier, but I wanted to have it to reference.
This wasn't, so, me pointing this out is not, I'm of the opinion this should happen, but I thought it worthy of just throwing it out there.
I think either that or just putting a reference next to the RE as the NSP.
Okay, perfect. I like that. I, you know, the old saying, always know your audience, and I, I think, I want the people who read this and pay attention to city council packets, as well as the city council, to know what NSP stands for. So, a simple reference to it somewhere would be, bring clarity to it, I think. Same thing with, down and under the additional highlights, clarification of dot forward slash MUTCD.
Oh, got it.
And I would just like to say that I definitely agree with the language in this letter, and in paragraph three of the letter, halfway through it, where it states, the city, cities be seen as an, quote, "up-and-coming community with pride," I think it's just a natural evolution of a city. I, I had a conversation with somebody who's involved with KLVB recently, and there are some people who are very passionate about wanting wood wayfarer signage, for example, and they don't wanna see the metal signage, but I feel like, you know, as a city grows and evolves, you just need to kick it up to a higher, more professional level of signage, and I think to achieve that, you move away, it's necessary to move away from the older signage, which is wood. So, that's what crossed my mind when I saw "up-and-coming community with pride." I think it does address that. And again, you see that iteration in the additional highlights, where it makes reference to enhances community development and civic pride. It's all about pride of ownership, curb appeal, I think. But that's my only real input on the letter.
Letter's fine. I know there was a map that went out early on a lot of suggested points for these to be displayed at.
Mm-hmm.
I've, I've spoke to one, a local builder here in the last, you know, couple of weeks, and, you know, they're one of the ones that have a model home here, and that's really the only place they wanted to point to, 'cause it's all infill building, you know, so they may finish a house over here, well, great, we got a sign, now it's obsolete a month later, you know, and they, it's, it's just a moving target. So, other than sending them to the model homes, you know, unless a big development or subdivision is going in, or unless there's some other information I'm missing, that seems to be the most logical thing to do. And if the builders here that are, I know there's a lot that don't have a model home that's consistent, well, it's not gonna be on the signs. I mean, it's just, it'd be the ones that have that model home, and we're kind of all on the same, but just the last one to the party, that's fine.
Yeah, you can't get everyone on the sign.
I think the only ones that have the continuous presence would be, like, the folks at Tassera, right?
Well, you got Tassera, you got the home builders up at Tassera, you got Bron's Homes, you got Flack's Homes.
Yeah, but you got Bron all over the place, I mean, there's no specific, you, you do have, they do have a, a model home, yeah.
And that would be the only place to guide to, is the model home.
But, but out, outside of them and a couple of others, there's, you know, we have a bunch of builders that don't have.
There's a couple, there's one or two off of Sale de Vaca.
Yeah.
You know, in there, that would, would point to, but, but yeah, that would just be the model homes.
Beyond the map, was, were there any other details shared about exactly how this program was gonna work?
So, if I may, I can speak to it, I think, Norma, by reading an excerpt from a letter written by Rochelle Lewis to Eric Zino and Tracy and Paul Prince, in response to Paul Prince asking some questions at a previous city council meeting. And I think the, the first paragraph of that letter can address much of this, and I'd like to just read that so that viewers are aware as well. "Hello, Eric, thanks for the email. The home builder program is designed to generate traffic to the new housing communities in the city. This would be any builder that has a collection of homes and not a single home built on an empty lot. I understand that there are 40-plus custom builders in Lago Vista. This home builder program would not cater toward them because the goal is to send traffic to a specific community. However, if the custom builder does have a block of homes that they build, they are welcome to purchase panels as well. We do include in the contract with the builders that the duration of the contract is 12 months." Russ, does that fill in, address some of that for you?
No, completely. I mean, it's just, reiterate what we were saying earlier, I mean, there's, there's Tassera, you know, you're gonna have a sign, obviously, to them, that's an ongoing bigger project, and then the infill builders will just, you know, as they've kind of suggested, just go to their model home and that's it.
There's like five builders in Tassera, there's like four builders, five builders in the hollows, okay?
Yeah, I forget about the hollows.
Five, five community, you know, Bron's Homes, those are probably the ones that would be on the signs, you know, 'cause they have an off, they have an office where they can send people to that office, and then from that office, they can take people into the community to see where they can build a home, but that's how it would probably work at those builders.
So, my take on it is that Rochelle really works with the builders in terms of, yes, you know, that's, they have multiple, going to a model home. My excitement about this, quite frankly, is not that there's gonna be something for a builder, although I think that's nice, but it will begin to sharpen up the community instead of the little stick things. It will save us some money in terms of having to basically enforce signage the right way and the wrong way, and I think getting feedback from the community, I mean, I'm sure we're gonna hear something when these signs go up, as to whether they like it or not, and that really gives us feedback in regard to expanding, whether or not we want to expand into wayfarer signage, you know, for future town center and, you know, stuff like that.
It's a great segue into opening up the conversation.
Yeah, it's a segue, and it doesn't cost us anything, really, it's the builders that really pay for it in the beginning, so it, to me, I see it as a, kind of a, a way to open the conversation and maybe save the city a little bit- and maybe save the city a little bit of money and sharpen us up. Anyway, that, that was my.
But are we, is it really going to do away with the, the stick signs? And my, my, my thought of that is, you're always going to have them in front of the houses. You know, somebody's going to put a sign there. But these other 25, 30 builders that don't have a model home here are still going to want to drive traffic to their one-off and then go back and retrieve their signs, as long as they're retrieving their signs.
Well, I think as long as they're in code, then that's okay. I think there'll be some encouragement if they have multiple and they're, they're putting signage where we have to do code enforcement, then I think there may be an opportunity to kind of corral or steer. I think the conversation with Rochelle was that they were opening to trying to find solutions for that kind of a situation. So, but again, you know, that was just my take on conversations.
Yeah. If, yeah, if, if I could ask, I have to tell you, it's the second sentence of the first paragraph that bothers me, which says that "This committee has studied and discussed extensively this particular program that we're about to endorse." And I can tell you, having gone back through all of our minutes and looking through my notes, I certainly didn't see any time that we got into this other than Eric made a, a high-level presentation of it for about 10 minutes at our meeting in June.
Well, no, we had the NSP actually give us a presentation.
Had the what?
I think you were, you, you were out that meeting, Gage. There was a meeting where they did present to us.
And if I remember correctly, you know, we were underwhelmed with the, their offering on the amenities that we wanted to advertise here. And Russ had the idea that, you know, that we could, we could work in conjunction with Vistago and, and advertise our amenities in a very professional manner for a lot less money. And the builder part, I think, we were okay with because it really didn't cost us anything, you know. That's what I remember.
When I look at the minutes of June 8th, and maybe that's the, the meeting that you're talking about, does that sound right?
It was, I believe, in June, was it not, NSP?
I mean, it looked like a lot of the details of the program were still very, very sketchy and that we were going to hear back more about what the program looked like.
They were going to be on our July agenda, but they were, they ended up, our meeting, we, we remember we didn't have a meeting, and then it was, so they went straight to city council. And so, but I think you do make a valid point. I mean, we haven't vetted them extensively.
That's all I'm saying.
It's a valid.
I, I don't, I don't want to send the message to council that we've thoroughly run something through when we really haven't.
I agree.
So, I mean, if it's nothing more than just taking that one sentence out, I'm cool with it. It might be a great idea. I just don't want to overreach what we've done.
I think it would be interesting to give them, okay, this is, as Russ says, this is our reality, okay? We have a number of builders, as, as David says, we have a number of builders in, in Tsera. We have some builders in the hollows. But in the mass of Lago Vista, we, you know, our main builder is Bron. And then we have the new Firefly project. How will that work? Can, can you do something with that? And see what they say. They may not, may not be real excited, who knows?
But, so, by, by.
No, no, the NSP.
NSP, I mean, they, 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 they deal with the developer, the actual builder. They, they do this all over.
Right.
They do this all over Texas. They have it in the end, or they didn't see the marks, and the marks go out and out. So it's not, and when builders, so if you only have three builders on the sign, I mean, the city gets 10% if you put on its town what it wants. And like, that's the buy-in for that town. But again, the city's not getting charged for putting anything in the town, it's paid for by the developer. That's why, that's why you don't have the, the one builder that puts one house on the block. I mean, I'm probably not going to participate in that. But it does, if you only have three builders on that sign, you might be able to get a little more out of that city signage on that sign. So it's not, and it's no cost to the city. It's not a wayfare, it's a way that you get to the wayfare department. You know, I'm, I'm not a proponent. I think when I talked to a developer, must have been a lot too much, like, when I drove there, it's like, I don't know where I'm at. I mean, it's no, there's no signage or, I mean, you're not letting a bus sign on a stick, you know, I mean. I mean, if you're going to keep up with the, the change in time and keep up with the other cities, you compete with other cities when you're trying to get across a building here all the time. You're not just competing with businesses in the block, you can meet with other, you can meet citizens in the world. You can be against this developer or this development, needs to come to your town. And if you're going to have to do it, then you're going to look apart as well. So I mean, it's just, I mean, it's, I'm not for it or against it, whatever, this is a good aside. But at some point, you're going to look apart if you want to get this stuff here in, to keep competing with other cities.
Eric, I think that's a great point. In fact, I think Don and Eric, Dave, y'all remember, we actually talked about wayfare signage back in the first quarter of 2020, before COVID went, went crazy on us. And I think everybody was signed up that, that we needed to go that direction. The, the, the only piece that we needed to work through was that the advice we were getting is that whatever wayfare signage we put up needed to be consistent with the overall community branding. And then, you know, that's when our, the meeting shut down and we didn't get to go any further with that.
But we also had the caveat there, you know, that we have to walk this narrow line or have some kind of liaison with the POA. Because a lot of the things that you would be, you know, declaiming on the signs don't have anything to do with the city necessarily.
Folks, I, I want to just make sure we stay compliant with Texas Open Meetings Act. The agenda item is strictly for the builders' signage. So let's, while, I would like to stray from that and discuss general wayfare sign, signage as much as you guys would, today's not the day for that, okay?
Paul, respectfully, I disagree with you on that, only because I think from our perspective, the builder's signage is a way for us to learn about general wayfares signage. That's part of the justification for going ahead.
I'm okay with discussing it. If, David, I mean, we're not going to be in violation of any rules.
Well, I don't, I don't think you could discuss the wayfare sign. As far as whether the developer signs lead, will lead to the wayfare signs, you could say that.
Okay, okay, excellent. Thank you, Gage.
The term deals in the contract, it just says it.
And I believe.
The wayfare department is in that contract, so the discussion of the wayfare is not.
Okay, good. So just want to make sure we're following the rules. The, is, is I, I believe I read somewhere that they even countered that in their discussions with the city, they countered that they would agree to a shorter-term contract of 12 months, is that right?
I think it was 10-year contract, agree to five.
Oh, was it five? Okay. Down to five years with an option to renew, I think is what it was.
And then along the line of, you know, the builders' program leading to information and insight, the, the reference letter from Waxahachie was very enlightening. And that goes with our letter that was on the shortlist.
Thank you. I have it here.
And essentially, they are following us, they followed a path like we are, we, we've been doing, very similar in terms of process and thinking. And what they found was that it did indeed give them insight in terms of, and feedback in regard to, you know, further signage beyond the builders' program. So it was their entryway. And they did send the Waxahachie because essentially I asked for something of similar nature from Lago Vista, and they were able to let us know, or send, send this letter from the city of Waxahachie.
When we discussed the wayfare sign, signage previously, as I recall, correct my memory if I'm mistaken, that there was a number of approximately $60,000 that came up, is that number? You, you recall the number?
Somewhere in there.
Something like $60,000 for wayfare signage. And I believe we were going to look at, I think, Russ, I believe you were going to look into, can we do it for, for less locally? Can we reach out to Vistago and, and have them do something? Have you had any time to delve into that?
I have not been able to stop by Vistago and have that conversation. But it is on my short list of things to.
I, I think, I, that would be great. And I think whether or not, if you could, if you could look at, look into that before our next meeting, that way is a contingency to having this on, wayfare signage on our next meeting, I think that would be great.
And my thought process was just to get, you know, pricing on small amounts because we don't have a count, you know, of what this is going to entail. So, you know, so we'll, we'll get some budget that way.
Okay. Any other discussion? Builder signage?
So as a result, are you going, you're going to strike that sentence?
So do you want to strike the sentence, or do we want to reword the sentence?
I, I don't know. I think we can live fine without the sentence.
I think we can strike it and just, I'll just tighten it up.
So if there is no more discussion, then I think we need a motion from someone to approve the letter with the, addressing the, the, not using the, or addressing the acronym in the beginning and striking the first paragraph.
No, striking the second sentence of the first paragraph.
Thank you. Anybody like to give a motion, make a motion?
I make a motion that we adopt and make this recommendation to Lago Vista City Council with the amended recommendations.
David, is that good? Second? I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, motion is passed. And we move on. Yes, David?
On the way, on the wayfairing signs, you need to, when you think about the wayfairing signs, you need to, you know, like you brought up the POA, the, like, the parks and stuff like that. You know, when you do wayfairing signs for this whole city, we'll, we'll have to get the POA involved in that to contribute money towards those wayfairing signs. So the city won't be absorbing the full force of doing wayfairing signs for the whole city. It will be a conjunction of the POA and the city.
Yeah, I like to point out. David did.
You've got Dubarkay Park.
Yeah, right.
Some of the parks.
The, the boat ramps, you know, the whole thing. Like to point out, just, you know, underline what you're saying. The letter from Waxahachie says, "The main focus of the project was to increase visitors to the historic downtown district as well as to highlight other city amenities." So, yeah, we've got to get together with POA.
Yeah.
And be prepared that the POA may not write that check.
No, don't put negative on it.
I'm just, I'm just, I don't speak for the POA by any means.
We got, we got friends in the POA.
But as far as city amenities, I mean, we've got Veterans Park on Dawn Drive. I mean, what in our government buildings, I mean, we really don't have anything to, to point to. Am I, am I missing anything?
Sunset Park.
Sunset Park, yeah. The library.
Yeah, okay, yeah, thank you.
Even if, like, kind of, even if Dubarkay Park, Dubarkay doesn't write the check, no, it's still an amenity for the city. I mean, people still need to know, the city might pick up that check, but it's still an amenity. They still have to have that, it's still a case of amenity.
That people can't get in it, right.
I mean. People can't get anywhere, it won't make a difference.
You know, if we, if we're doing Lago Fest, people are coming from all over the place, down to Dubarkay Park. It's not just people in Lago. Everybody's coming down to the park for that particular festival. If you drive your car there and you're not from Lago, you need to understand how to get to Dubarkay Park.
Or to the high school or one of the other places that we're shutting people in.
So there has to be certain places that say, "High school this way." You know, there, people coming in for a football game, they need to know where the high school is.
Yeah, those things, the, you, the golf course, I don't know how that went over my head, but yeah, that, that definitely needs.
Just because.
Be surprised how many don't even know.
All right, folks, let's, let's move on. Consent agenda. All matters listed in item five consent agenda are to be considered routine by the committee and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Agenda item number five, consider approval of the following. June 8th, 2021, regular meeting minutes. Has anybody not read the minutes? Need a motion to approve the minutes?
I shall make.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Discussion items. Item, agenda number six. Discussion on furthering the relationship with broadband and 5G providers regarding current and future broadband infrastructure needs for Lago Vista. So I'd like to fill in the committee on some of the progress we've made on this. And much of it is, I, I believe in giving credit where credit is due. And Norma has, is the one who, who was the catalyst for this. And a couple of weeks ago, we, through Norma's introduction, we facilitated a meeting between the liaison for Charter Communications, who's responsible for new broadband development, that's the right choice of words, with Tracy, Eric, David, Roy, myself, Norma, and, am I missing anyone? There was a, and there was a good conversation, the meeting lasted for about an hour. And over the course of that conversation, we discussed, how can EDAC help to pinpoint locations where broadband internet gaps need to be filled and/or new broadband infrastructure should be laid? Some of the places that we identified, the purpose of the meeting was not to identify those, but just a couple names came up in the course of that meeting, such as new city hall facilities, Sunset Park, communal areas, future areas without identifying any one, just in general, areas where we anticipate commercial construction to go, as well as filling in gaps in old Lago Vista, as well as in new developments. The gentleman said that it was his desire to speak with new developments, people who are spearheading new developments as soon as possible. There was a feeling that maybe we shouldn't make that introduction right off the bat because there are, in fact, a lot of, many occasions where people are just trying to flip property, and it would be a waste of, of time and not a good investment. So the conversation also covered where their infrastructure currently is in the city, but for proprietary or trade-secret reasons as well as security reasons, that's something that he felt was only appropriate for sharing with Tracy, our city manager. And they agreed that they would have that discussion. Tracy also made clear that any, whenever the city is doing work on infrastructure, such as water, water lines, that they can contact them and say, "Hey, we've got these lines opened up if you want to come in and, and put your, your broadband down, the conduit down and such." What are some other things, Norma, that you recall from the meeting that would be good to apprise the committee on?
Well, you know, the, the answer is to talk about a process, to your point, Councilwoman Williams. You know, it all started with Don, Gage, and I just really having a, a conversation. And it just so happens that I had the bandwidth to kind of be the point person. But, you know, they'd done so much work before that. And, you know, we, we actually had a subcommittee meeting. And that's where we identified at least five areas that required connection with broadband, whether that be with Charter, ATT, whoever that is. You know, that's what we needed. Gage, as I recall, there was another catalyst event in our conversation, do you remember?
Another what?
Catalyst event?
Catalyst event. And it may have been that you, you had just come from a, one of the discussions about the new city offices. What we were running into is, well, if we decide we're going to go here, can we even get communication to? we're going to go here, can we even get communication to that, that, that point? And so I really relied heavily on them and I really appreciated. And like I said, I had the bandwidth. So we, I was able to go ahead and, and talk with it. But the other thing that has come up and, and part of why I would like, like this coming up now and in our discussions is that there is a, the state of Texas has put together through the, I think it's through the, the funds to help reignite communities, a broadband commission to help communities such as ours to be able to expand access because they're recognizing how important that is. My part in this was, we don't want to miss the boat because I did do some research on other grants on other items, and because that money was available and we were not ready, that money was gone before we ever got to the table. And so I expressed to Mr. Serna that I would like to know when there are opportunities for us to overlay and create an alliance on behalf of the city of Lago Vista in order to expand that access. So the five areas, by the way, that we identified were the, like the upcoming developments that seem to be pretty, you know, go ahead and lay the infrastructure. When it gets to a point, Roy was very nice about saying, "There is a point where this all become, comes together." And when it is relevant to have those discussions, fill in the current gaps in Lago. And that's kind of a big deal because we do have a lot of gaps and they're, it is a challenge for this community based on, some things are up in the air, some is underground. Work to address the gaps on the main districts of Dawn Drive in hopes that the heart of our city can really come alive. Additional future growth areas highlighted, you know, in terms of our vision or the, or the plan. And, you know, that really kind of actually with Don and Gage, we talked about really keeping an eye on creating maybe areas that are basically nets of access, like in the commercial district or in like the parks, the Sunset Park and stuff. That is a little bit of a different conversation, but yet still relevant within this because if, if Spectrum can, is the one that helps let us know and work with us on gaining grants, then woo-hoo. So anyway, that was kind of the backstory in terms of that meeting happening. And I was going to say, this is a reintroduction. Eric got it going back in 2019, 2020, and then we all got shut down. And, you know, then it was just Gage, Don and I just kind of resurrecting it again, mainly because of the monies that are coming down the pipe that we have the opportunity to potentially utilize in order to expand that access here for our community. Now, the last thing I'll just say is that he was kind enough to let us know. You were talking about the rental assistance, Meredith. He was, he forwarded information in, in regard to helping citizens that are struggling to maintain their access to the net. So special subsidies in that regard, and Meredith was going to be getting that out to the public. So I truly appreciated that. And especially when we talk about economic development and keeping our local community, people have the access to upskill themselves, that's extremely important.
There's a, there's one thing I've, I've mentioned to you and Gage also. Attending some of the, you know, the virtual meetings of the governor's broadband commission, they have a completely different idea of broadband than, than we do. And that's something that I think that would be wise to, to check with, with the Spectrum folks. If there's money coming down the pipe, is that only to meet what the governor's commission, what, what their definition of broadband is? Because if that's so, it doesn't do us any good because their, their definition of broadband is 25 megabits down. We far exceed that a lo, a long time ago. So, because they want to, they want to build out Texas. And there's a lot of Texas that doesn't have any. And so they think if they can get 25, you know, megabits down, well, great. But we're far beyond that and we want to make sure that what we're talking about is moving from 200 megabits to a gigabit. That's the only caveat I have.
There was one point in the conversation where Tracy pointed out that Texas would, I, excuse me, I don't recall if the funds were coming from the state of Texas or the federal government. It may have been the federal government COVID relief and the amount of $1.3 million. She, if I recall correctly, I believe she said that she felt like a portion of that could be allocated to this, but how that's facilitated?
You got to find out.
Who, who makes that, who makes that decision? I'm not sure. But I would like to see some with our council liaison, if you could follow up with Tracy?
Yeah.
And find out if, if she could initiate a conversation with Mr. Serna and see if it's possible to use that, a portion of that 1.3 million to help subsidize, if necessary, some infrastructure, get the broadband going. Just, can we spend it on broadband? High-speed internet, to be clear. Any other discussion? Oh, there is one other thing. We've spoken about Fredericksburg in the past. They have a 5G, big, nice 5G towers there. I'd like to see a nice 5G tower here.
Yep.
Yes.
Well, and that was part of, you know, number five, a wish of the subcommittee is to start those discussions because I think that's a big part of the, basically the umbrellas and stuff like that, that were, basically access that we're trying to create out here.
Agreed. Anybody else? No? Okay. Going on to number eight. Report from strategy leads on the following. Norma, support existing businesses. How's that going? You're doing great.
Well, it kind of got redirected to broadband stuff. So I was trying to make sure that our businesses could have adequate access, not only for them, but for their employees. But I did want to take this opportunity to ask something of Eric because I find these days I'm not able to visit like I wanted to, according to what Councilman Williams suggested that we do, visiting with the local businesses. Number one, ask them, you know, about their access and, and all of that. That would be extremely helpful because in discussions, Charter was asking for feedback. Okay. The second is, I would love to hear some of their, you know, like maybe their top three challenges. I am guessing one of them is, you know, hiring, being able to hire employees and staff locally. I just keep seeing the help wanted signs. I'm interested in that. And then, you know, the third is, is there anything else that potentially the E D A C committee could facilitate in terms of local? So I'm taking advantage of, of you and Jennifer already making those rounds, but kind of saying E D A C would like to, you know, take the opportunity maybe to learn a little bit from Yoss' conversations, if that's okay.
Definitely, I will. They can't always, they have to depend on, because it depends on the business.
Right.
Restaurant, they, they kill it, but staffing was number one issue. So the restaurant, lunchtime, proud. Get to the permanent process. We've got ironed out two places and just to get to something, or whatever, destination.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Norma.
On some existing business, the candy shop that just opened up, next to Anytime Fitness, they just signed a contract with Amy's Ice Cream.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
Great. That's great news.
That's coming down the pike. I've been spending a lot of time at.
Ice cream night in Lago Vista.
Oh, I thought you were going to say the candy store.
Yeah. They're doing a good job.
Oh, they're doing, they're great. I've, I've actually partaken of Lakeside Subs myself. They're awesome.
Same here. Love it.
And Casa Mexico is doing good also. They're in real time with help. So, you know, someone's looking for a job. That would be a good opportunity.
So I'd like to jump, just jump on that real quick, if I may, Councilman Williams, is, there's been talk in the city in the past about the creation of an economic development corporation. I'm not proficient on economic development corporations, but if anybody knows the answer, I'd like to know, can they, is it, can an economic development corporation spend money to create job training programs?
Thank you. As a component of the P O A, it depends on which ones, 4A, 4B. And unfortunately, there can be some for the training. I mean, you can't exactly which one, but, yeah, it could be, I think it can, I don't quote me on it, but I think it is the one that, or if it can do that.
With regards to an economic development corporation, I'm kind of straight, straight here just a little bit. Regarding an economic development corporation, can they also be used for acquiring land to be owned by the city or the corporation itself? For the purpose of?
Corporation acquiring?
Mm-hmm.
That would be illegal. I'm not, I don't want to say that. That would be illegal. I technically, I'm not.
Okay.
And it may depend on the covenants around the formation of the actual economic development.
They can help with getting the grants, but they can't acquire our land. The land is sealed.
Okay. Okay. Is there, is there, has it, I think that an economic development corporation for the city could help with development.
That'd be great, but we, we got to get rid of.
Cat Metro and get that funding.
Do that.
Yep.
I mean, that's two percent.
That's right.
You know, you can't do it without getting rid of Cat Metro.
And I think we're waiting on, what are we waiting on for that? We're waiting on trying to find somebody to lobby on our behalf to introduce a piece of legislation to get us out of it?
Without that, we, you know.
Right. Okay.
And I think Brian has done some research for us on that. And so when he, we'll be able to kind of ask what his latest, because he really was kind of keeping an eye.
Right, he was watching the, the legislature and the bills and its, and its calendar.
And also, you know, how that would tie into the.
Excuse me. You know, there is some property, as I understand it, well, directly across from the high school, a couple 10-acre tracks. Seems to me that would be a great place for commercial development of some sort.
The mayor is on the small, I believe what it's called, where you, the mayor's on the small towns. They meet in a call and he's on that committee and he's also on that rookie mayor, not to say other youngers considering, you know, I think it's, it's perfect timing to get that.
Right, Leander's getting out of Cat Metro.
I don't know if they get, they haven't approved it yet. I would say if they're laying toward or they're out discussing, but you know, the more empowering, the more numbers.
Right.
It's a good time they get that. It might, it, it was, but we're going up to, well, they'll see, you know, kind of get that going.
Sure.
Mayor is on meetings, but not probably in that meeting, but, I don't know, there's some, some mayors in the small town of that type of special.
Russ, recruit new businesses? Anything to report?
Don't have anything to report on that.
Okay. Gage and Don, again, thank you for your, your efforts on the, on our subcommittee for broadband. Thank you for your work on that. Is there anything, I think we've kind of covered a lot of the local infrastructure conversation.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add.
No, okay. And Robin is not here. So let's go on to agenda item number nine. Discuss ideas regarding destination events and festivals. I have one thing I'd like to throw out there as an idea. I think we should maybe try to form, I don't know the, the procedural way of doing this, but have persons from our committee talk with Parks and Rec and try to come up with some festivals, something, music festival of sorts, some type of event, something good for economic development, something to give people, kind of like a Kind of Lago Fest, you know, just something. What do y'all, any thoughts on that? Any other thoughts on, on destination events, festivals, et cetera pursuant to agenda item number nine?
I think that's a great idea in terms of, Robin actually has got some great ideas. So we'll, we can say underneath, Robin's going to be put on the spot without her being here. Robin, we're going to have you help spearhead this. But she actually had some really great ideas. But I say, you know, I think there's an opportunity maybe for that discussion to help Meredith with the current one, and that then expand, you know, those efforts, just because there's a lot of know-how with Meredith that could help us understand what's feasible, what's not, what goes into it, and, you know, things like that. Ideas that if we wouldn't wish to implement it, we would understand what was going on. So anyway, I think just as an idea, you know, it'd be great to get Robin's feedback, you know, because I know she's involved in, in creating and working quite a few events. And I think we have the makings of it, Paul.
Okay, let's, let's keep this on the next agenda.
I think that it would also be wise in pre-planning, if we decide to try to deep six Cat Metro, to be aware that we're liable to knock the legs out from under Meredith. That we need to be aware of that beforehand because she relies very heavily on Cat Metro for Lago Fest and things like that. So just keep that in mind.
That's an important consideration.
Yes, it is.
It's a, it would be a huge budget item to replace them.
Yep.
On a very minuscule budget.
Do, do you know, just like a, off the top, just a round number, just?
What it would cost to replace them? I do not know, but in the past, we've had as many as 10 buses, full-size buses.
Oh, my God.
Last time, I think we had eight full-size buses, and they run from about 11:00 a.m. till 10:30 at night.
Oh, my gosh.
So it's a lot of drivers, it's a lot of buses, it's a lot of meals, it's a lot of operations managers, supervisors. So it's, it did give me an in-kind estimate, and I can't remember off the top of my head directly what you're going to explain. Is that something you want whenever?
Not yet.
Yeah. It's substantial.
Keep in mind, too, we keep saying, get out Cat Metro, yes, we get that 2%, we want that 2% on it. That doesn't mean you contract with Cat Metro. You contract with, I think, we already have that one. People have to have some type of transportation.
Absolutely.
They'll be contracted. So you're not hurting the, well, we contract, that would still be a part of doing that. So let's, you know, let's make sure we understand what we're saying. We, we want, we want the 2% back for what economic development, but we're not.
But when you do it, you need to.
Some type of transportation that you got to contract. I also do.
Yes, Mr. Williams. It's okay.
Part of the pushback on getting rid of Cat Metro is, is that we are a rural city of Travis County. And Travis County has certain rules and regulations on what we can do and what we can't do. We got rid of Cat Metro, you know, the mayor's looked into carts as being a substitute for Cat Metro. But carts, we cannot contract directly with carts because Travis County, we have to go through Metro, and Metro would then send carts to us. So we would still be paying Metro something.
For, for those watching now and in the future, would you mind explaining what carts are?
Carts is another service that provides buses to different areas.
Okay.
Very similar.
It's an acronym.
So, but because of our area, we can't directly deal with carts. We would have to go through Cat Metro. And Leander or Round Rock does the same thing. They have, they have carts in their area that distribute, but they can't, they contract with Metro to do that now.
Okay.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes, ma'am.
If I may add, I.
Of course.
I believe that, as I'm remembering, don't hold me to it, but the in-kind service that Cat Metro provides for Lago Fest, and I'm not speaking also in terms of Fourth of July or other events, their in-kind donation of the buses in the service is approximately half of our entire budget. is approximately half of our entire budget.
Wow. Do you by chance happen to have the latest Metro numbers on you? The ridership numbers?
I don't, I don't with Nancy.
I, I would be curious to see then, if you please.
Sure. And that's, that is the pickup service numbers.
Okay.
Rather than the entire Lago Fest service.
Thank you.
By the way, the.
Yes.
Carts is an acronym for Capital Area Rural Transportation System.
Nailed it. Thank you. All right. Work plan. Updating the work plan with activities in progress. I put my eyeglasses on. We've got this up on the screen for everyone. Eric, do you have the ability to increase, increase it in size by about 25% or more, perhaps? Can you go to 125? Keep going. Okay, there we go. Can, can everyone see that?
Yep.
Okay. Updating the work plan with activities in progress. So I don't know that today is the day we need to actually go through and update this. But I think we should have a conversation about what areas we feel should be updated. What comes to mind? And we can, how we're gonna go about doing that.
So if I may.
Please, Norma.
Part of my thinking on this is I'm all about a dashboard in terms of, you know, progress. You know, maybe a few activity information within that we can add on to the work plan in our respective areas in order to kind of, you know, show a movement of the bar. Because I think even I, looking through a lot of the minutes and such, it's like, oh, my gosh, there's a lot here, but you get overwhelmed with it. You know, and a few numbers would work well. So for example, I think.
Go for it.
One of the things that came out of the conversation regarding, just to throw out an example on the broadband, was that Tracy was able to ascertain how many homes didn't have broadband at the moment. So if that's one of our, yeah, she, I mean, it was something like 400 or so.
It was, it was surprising, it was for all of Travis County, as I recall.
Well, she's had a number there, then she actually had it for Lago, I think, I think. I could be wrong.
That's a good number to have, yeah.
Right.
And so I was like, oh, well, that would definitely, where are we this month? You know, so just kind of getting some information. The other thing that did strike me was that this committee does a lot of background research on our topics that we're working on. You know, and a lot of it overlapped the advocacy, you know, with other committees and stuff. And so a couple of items with that. One is that by recording some of that research is actually for grant purposes, being someone that's gone after grants before, is in-kind hours. And it, it works toward additional dollars that we could get on grants if that was recorded. And then the last thing is just, you know, just to say, are we having an impact? Are we addressing the right thing? And, you know.
Sure.
I don't want to get too elaborate about it. But I did want to bring up the discussion because I would love to hear ideas. And as Paul and I were talking, it would be great. I mean, we've, you know, gotten the broadband communication started. We've helped to support a little bit, you know, through the letter for Sunset Park. You know, we're about to say, you know, we're also doing another recommendation for the city council in regard to the builders program and done some research on that. And so it would be just fabulous. I'm just asking to say, this is something that we consider, we'd like to get.
I think, I like the idea of the dashboard.
I think the dashboard. Well, and then Eric is always so good about saying, this is how many, you know, dollars we've brought in. And, you know, it doesn't have to give confidential information, but just a.
But it's, it's a great way, I think, also to, you know, having a real-time dashboard. You know, it's not updated necessarily, it doesn't have to be updated every meeting. But having something that our Economic Development Director can see, our City Council Liaison, other council members. Our, our city manager, our mayor, Meredith?
I, I just think it would help to direct, you know, maybe some of the conversation. And especially, I think, you know, we've gone through a city manager changeover. But I think the, the council, you know, might, it might be helpful for them in terms of some of the decision-making that they're making. I mean, I'm just throwing out scenarios.
Yep.
If you're trying to do a dashboard, I think you have five areas, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So, you know, if you set up those five areas. So if you add something, you put it under your area. Russ adds something, he puts it under his area. You could, a running total on what you're wanting to report on. And do it that way. That probably would be the easiest. And it would just go on the end of the.
Right.
Of this report.
Ozar, when you met.
Oh, there you go.
See versus read. I can't read that far.
Right. So that was one of my, my thoughts is, I actually started a document with this and I started adding on, you know, some of the information. But, you know, I, infographics is something that really makes a, a big impact on me. Because we can quickly, but I, I like adding maybe that information for the detail. But also, I think in another discussion, this was just simply, you know, kind of like the, the festivals to throw it out so we get our brains thinking about it. But, you know, some, what are some of the markers that we would like to really highlight at the top from an infographic thinking point of view? You know, I think, when I heard we went from, what, 78 to 90? You know, in terms of something like that? That's like, wow! And, and we're struggling, you know, not that people aren't interested here. We're, we're trying to find places for them. Out here, so I thought that was really relevant. I think that's kind of neat, gives us a little bit of a jump for.
Go back to 2019 and wasn't it like 40s or something like that on sales tax? Or was it even close? Didn't we like almost double during 2020?
During, during, during the pandemic, yeah, sales taxes jumped exponentially. So as people were just staying local. How, how, speaking of which, is the golf, you know, the golf, the golf course numbers went way up.
Still up, yeah.
Still, so it's maintaining.
Still maintaining.
That's great.
And that's still probably another underused venue as far as bringing in more tournaments, you know, and things like that. I mean, especially with what is, you know, the improvements that are being made to the golf course.
So, you know, we, we spoke a couple, a few minutes ago about maybe having a liaising or talking with Parks and Rec. Perhaps there needs to be a conversation with the Golf Course Advisory Committee, too.
Oh, yeah. All right.
So.
So anyway, that, forgive me, Paul.
No, certainly.
To wrap up, that was just something like I said. So while you have your thinking caps on, I would, I would say, I'm also one that I am in the moment these days. I consider, I'm in the sandwich generation. So I've got kids and grandkids over here and the moms over there. And we're doing all these other things. So I would say, I can, I can hear something. But I would love if you had, it can be a one-liner in the subject line that says, Norma, we need to look at this. You know, that would be, I, I would like to just put it out there. I would entertain that so that I have, you know, maybe a culmination of ideas that we could put and then discuss at the next meeting.
Yep, okay. Okay. And, well, then perhaps we can each send you an email to that effect.
That would, that would be great.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, here we go.
We have covered everything on our agenda. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A whole second.
All right.
All those in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned. Gage, are those yours, Gage?
What's that?
Are these yours?
Not mine.